Hello, it's the regular monthly board meeting. We have our two slides, the prayer and the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather this evening and for the opportunity to do work on behalf of the children of this parish. Guide us in our decision-making so that we may continue to put the needs of our students first and help us to do the things necessary to continue to serve them and this community in a way that truly addresses their needs. These things we pray in your name.
Does one more?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will call the preacher?
Sasse Vader.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson.
Here.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Ms. Isard is not with us. Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Foche. All right, the first item on agenda, Super News. Mr. Lamont, how you doing, sir?
Hello, hello, and I'm sure everyone could use a little Super News right about now. And it's nice to see y'all in y'all little cozy confines again. Another sign of normalcy that y'all all close together. I'm presenting today because as y'all know, Ms. Schneider had a little Super News of her own. So, you know, just because schools aren't open doesn't mean that not everybody's not working constantly getting everything together. So, as you will see, there's a bunch of different activities and a different stuff happening throughout the school system. So, sit back and rock, it's a short one today, it's like six minutes. So, sit back and enjoy Super News.
And now from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for Super News. Hello, I'm Barry Lamont, and welcome to Super News. My usual co-host, Alex, is not with us today as she had some Super News of her own to attend to. And on today's program, we'll begin with the end, the end of the school year, that is. Here we see some of the activities that were part of our eighth grade ed goods ceremonies. These drive-up style events allowed our eighth graders and family members one last chance to see teachers and friends before beginning summer break. Congratulations to these hard-working students, and we look forward to seeing you all here at Chumet High School next year. And speaking of our high school, big kudos to this year's high school teacher of the year, Annalise Casar Tedesco, who was recently named as one of the 2022 Teacher of the Year finalists by the Louisiana Department of Education. Annalise was recognized for incredible work in inspiring the next generation with a love of the performing arts. We're very proud of her and thank her for being such a great ambassador of our school family.
That when they leave our class or our school, ultimately, they will have the skills to function as a professional in the art world if they choose, or that they will have the skills to address a crowd, or interview well, or successfully present themselves professionally with confidence, or most importantly, to creatively find the place and the will to become the young man or woman they are destined to grow into.
We would also like to congratulate two other educators who will team up to lead Chumet Elementary School this year. Katie McNair will serve as the school principal, while veteran educator Andrea Woodward will be the new assistant principal. Welcome to your new roles, and we know you'll do a great job.
I'm trying to pick up where we left off with instilling the love of learning with all the students. We're focusing heavily this year on read, read, read. We want students to read for enjoyment, to read to learn, and read to understand. That is key in life nowadays.
In other news, hands-on learning continues to be the focus at the STEM Summer Camp taking place at the MoMA Center. This fun and immersive educational program brings science, technology, engineering, and math to life. Nearly 60 students took part in this two-week sessions at MoMA's where we keep encouraging our students to reach for the stars. Other students taking advantage of learning opportunities are those enrolled in our summer skills program. Remediation, grade recovery, and acceleration to help prepare for our next school year are all part of the skills program.
We are housing summer skills for the entire district, for the entire elementary district. We have 160 students here in attendance now. They're doing a little different scenario of what they've done in the past. They're doing a little remediation with a little bit of acceleration. We also have the library open for the entire St. Bernard community, so they can come in and check out books, read books, take some ARP quizzes. The goal is to make kids successful so that when they start off next school year, they won't have as many struggles, that they will come in with a base.
And while these students were fine-tuning their academic skills, some of our other students were getting musical training via a chorus intensive taking place at the Culture Odd Center. Under the direction of music teacher Judy Rockwell, these students are learning vocal techniques, choreography, and teamwork. The three-week session will end with a mini-show performance later this summer. Good luck to our performers. And before we go, we'd also like to give a big shout-out to a pair of student athletes from Chumet High School. Congratulations to Trent Gonzalez and Ricky Adams on being named to this spring's all-district teams. In addition to this honor, these athletes were also voted as the MVP of the entire district. So whether it's softball or baseball, these owls were truly shining on the diamond. That's it for now. Enjoy the summer, and we'll see you next time on Super News where we always let the Super News roll.
Okay, so Chumet's gonna have it this year.
An alumni golf tournament.
Yeah, the alumni golf tournament.
I think the date is going to be August 14th.
Right, fantastic. Good news.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Lamont.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, approval of the minutes, incorporation of minutes of June 8, 2021, to June 22, 2021, regular monthly meeting. Motion by Mr. Warner.
I'll second.
By Ms. Jackson. Any questions?
Please cast your vote.
Okay, motion passes 10-0.
Okay. Approved minutes of the May 25, 2021, regular monthly meeting is published on June 18, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Ms. Lamont, second by Ms. White. Any questions or corrections on those minutes? If not been, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
The review of personnel changes. Ms. Foche?
I just highlighted in yellow our changes since the committee meeting, and I'd like to bring your attention, as Mr. Lamont has stated, Ms. Schneider is out on maternity leave, and when she comes back, will be in a reduced role. So, we advertised for a new communications coordinator, and I'd like to just announce that that's going to be Alexis Pritchard. She has had, and we're very, very lucky, Alexis started as a teacher with us here in the St. Bernard Parish School System, worked many years with us, actually then was hired at the State Department of Education, where she served as their Director of Communication and Public Affairs, and for the last three years has played a prominent role in all of the public relations and communications for the entire State Department of Education in Baton Rouge. But she resides here in St. Bernard. Her children go to our schools. She has always wanted to come back, and when this opening occurred, put in her application and her background, she can just hit the ground running, so we're very, very pleased. She's been 12 years in education, mostly here in St. Bernard, with the last three or four years at the State Department of Education in a similar role to what she will assume here. So, she has the experience, and she'll be able to hit the ground running. So, we're very pleased to have her on.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. And sorry to hear that Shelby's gonna be leaving. We announced that two weeks ago, you know, as far as that goes, and we wish you well on your new path that you're taking in your life.
Thank you.
But we have a new person on our list that's taking her place, Ms. Angie Burhardt. We're glad to have you on board, and we're willing to work, we're gonna, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call any of the one of these board members and Ms. Foche. Okay? Thank you. All right. Any questions about the personnel changes? Mr. Long?
Ms. Foche, I see we're starting to get some resignations. You think we're gonna have more before school starts?
It's quite possible. It's a typical summer reaction as families and people move. They may be moving out of the parish, or out of the city, or out of the state, and we've got people coming and going, hopefully more people coming than going, but we should see that activity continue in this fashion throughout the summer.
There hasn't been a problem in recruiting new teachers, I don't believe.
Well, we are looking for certified teachers in some of the more difficult-to-staff areas, primarily, you know, your math and your science and special education, and we always are looking for good certified teachers. We're gonna begin on the first week in July, our Teach St. Bernard Preparation Program for the new group coming in. So, we will, and we have a very, very good group of incoming new people going through our certification program, beginning, as I said, the first week in July, but we are looking for a few more positions for certified teachers.
And what about speech therapists? We doing okay?
Well, we're hoping to get them. We hired two, if you look on this, this past, this past time, trying to get my eyes to fall on, yes, it's sort of mid, three-quarters of the way down the front page, you see two speech therapists that we have.
Oh, okay.
But we can always use them, speech therapist, school psychologist, social workers, those people appraisal-type people, while the speech therapist is on the team as well.
Okay.
So, anyone who's interested in applying and being part of one of the best school systems in the state of Louisiana, please come, let us know, and we will be happy to interview you for positions which we may have at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Foche. Okay, item five, approval of school board members' training certificates for 2020 to be included in the June 22, 2021, regular monthly meeting. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lamont. Any questions? This training, we talked about it before, but every year, the board has to do at least six hours of certified training, and usually everybody just goes up to Baton Rouge, and if not, they can look at it on film and get their credits in. So, but I want to thank everybody, because I think everybody obtained this.
And exceeded the number of hours.
That's right, and we're very proud of that. We thank you. So, all in favor, just cast your vote, please.
Motion passes 10-0. Let me get back to yous to yous.
Okay. Approval of administration request to solicit monthly quotations for the fruit, fresh fruit and vegetables. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith.
I'm second.
Second by Ms. Jackson. Any questions? This was a recommendation. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Approval for the lowest response bid for the paper cleaning and custodial supplies. This was a recommendation by the committee. Ms. White?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sasse Vader. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Approval for the lowest response bid for the official journal. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lamont. Any questions? This training, we talked about it before, but every year, the board has to do at least six hours of certified training, and usually everybody just goes up to Baton Rouge, and if not, they can look at it on film and get their credits in. So, but I want to thank everybody, because I think everybody obtained this.
And exceeded the number of hours.
That's right, and we're very proud of that. We thank you. So, all in favor, just cast your vote, please.
Motion passes 10-0. Let me get back to yous to yous.
Okay. Approval of administration request to solicit monthly quotations for the fruit, fresh fruit and vegetables. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith.
I'm second.
Second by Ms. Jackson. Any questions? This was a recommendation. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Approval for the lowest response bid for the paper cleaning and custodial supplies. This was a recommendation by the committee. Ms. White?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sasse Vader. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Approval for administration request to advertise a request for a proposal for grass cutting. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Warner.
I'm second.
Second by Ms. Lamont. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Approval for the lowest response bid for gasoline, diesel, and automotive fluids. This was a recommendation by the committee. Ms. Lamont?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Jackson. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 9-4, and one abstention.
Approval for the lowest response bid for painting and body repairs of vehicles. This was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Ms. White, second by, oh, Ms. Jackson, I'm sorry. Okay. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Approval for the lowest response bid for the official journal. This was a recommendation by the committee.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Lamont, second by Mr. Campbell. Any questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Okay, consideration of the renewal of excess of workers' compensation insurance with the affordable rates. I think we had some questions about that before we go, because there was no recommendation from the committee itself. So, y'all got an update on that, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, there was no recommendation for the committee, and by the way, Mr. Timmons is planning to do it with us.
Glad to have you.
From Clements Insurance. There was no recommendation, because they were still trying to negotiate and talk to other agencies to see if they could get a better rate for us, and they did talk to some other people, they did send some feelers out, but we were unable to get a better premium than the one we presented at the board, at the committee meeting. So, our recommendation stands at Star Insurance with a premium of $70,256. I'll make that motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Long, second by Mr. Warner. Any questions for Mr. Clements or Mr. Fernandez? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Thank you, sir. Okay, consideration of request for a proposal for the seventh and eighth-grade science materials. There's no recommendation from the committee. Who's gonna be addressing that?
Ms. Lamont.
Ms. Lamont, how you doing?
Good evening, how you doing? I went so quickly through the beginning. Yes, okay. So, I just want to take a minute this evening and go over with you the recommendation from the committee. We had several proposals presented to us for seventh and eighth-grade science material, and we were fortunate enough to find Amplify Science, which addresses the Louisiana State standards. And I just want to take a minute to explain what I mean by that. Way back when we went to Common Core for English and Math, a couple of years later, the state was gonna adopt the Next Generation Science Standards, but instead, they had, the committee got together and sort of tweaked them, and they turned into the Louisiana Science Standards. Well, the way they tweaked them, Next Gen Standards has certain topics in sixth grade, certain topics in seventh, certain topics in eighth. It's no longer where you teach a whole subject in a year, like Earth Science, all of eighth grade, Life Science, all of seventh grade. They mix those topics around the years. So, Next Generation had the topics broken out by year. When Louisiana standards were developed, they didn't follow the same breakdown, so you may be teaching something in sixth grade in Next Gen Standards, and it might be in eighth grade in Louisiana Standards. So, if you have a book that addresses the Louisiana standards, it doesn't necessarily match the national Next Generation standards. So, the biggest thing for us when we looked at this, we waited sort of heavily on the points, is does the book address the Louisiana standards, not just the national standards? Because it is difficult to have a book that teaches something in sixth grade, and you have to go to the eighth-grade book to pull a piece back into the sixth-grade book. So, one thing right out of the gate, the number-one thing Amplify does, is it addresses the Louisiana standards. The other books address them, but you may have to go to multiple lessons to address one standard sporadically. You're not gonna get one standard in one place. So, the ease of addressing the standards, you can see from the bid tabulation, we did wait a little more, just for ease of use with that. A couple of the books didn't even address the Louisiana standards completely, and didn't show that they addressed them. So, in the bid tabulations, you'll see that as well. Some of the other great features of this whole program is we really trying to work on helping the students read and analyze complex science texts. So, there are many opportunities in this series where students can read and analyze complex science texts, but also, it helps them collaborate with each other as they do the reading. It gives them the ability and teaches them how to discuss and come up with solutions together to actually solve and address real-life problems in the series. They actually have a great component that helps the students have a digital component to go with the print component. And textbooks are not like they were when I was in school. When I was in school, you bought a thick hardcover book, and now they cost probably $120 for one big thick book, and we kept them seven-year cycle. Now, the companies do workbook style, and if you have children or grandchildren in school, you know they come home with a workbook style. And then each year, they get a different book for that grade, because now they can actually work in the book, engage in the material, and immerse themselves in the material. In the past, you had a book, and then you had your notebook you did your work on, or your loose leaf, and it was not really connected, or you couldn't really see the connection. So, now they can really immerse themselves in the text, highlight, annotate, work on the investigation, take notes like they are taking scientific notes. So, it really is a nice thing that they get their own journal, their own book, their own workbook, and they can really immerse themselves in the science material. They also have many chances for the students to read together, write together, and then argue points, learn from each other, get new information, rethink, and come up with a new decision based on what their partners have told them. So, it really is what we've been asking teachers to do for a long time on their own, looking at the Louisiana Science Standards, and asking teachers to give the students these opportunities, which they try, but it's really difficult to do on a daily basis. This material has it built in for the teachers. They have reteaching built in for the teachers, they have differentiation for the special ed, the ELL, enrichment for the honor students. They even have grade recovery work built in, which is a big push for our district. If students don't get it the first time on the first test, we encourage the teachers to let them reteach, retest, and let them recover. If they didn't get it by this certain test, that's built in for the teachers and students here. So, in addition to doing a good job addressing the state standards, giving us the print and the digital matter, it also helps us address the individual needs and come back for students who need a reteach and another retest. So, and have the bid tabulation result here for you, but the product, we're really, you know, reflects really great for the students and teachers.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Warner?
I want you to extend.
Well, like I said, in the past, you used to buy one book and keep it seven years. This is yearly $50,000 yearly.
And it costs benefit analysis.
Well, and it's about, normally, like I said, it's about $120 for a book. These are about $20 a student, and that $50,000 includes the teacher kit and the student kits, along with the manipulatives and any consumables that we use for the students. Because when you're gonna do a science experiment, you're gonna need the consumables. The kits all come with a class set. The teachers don't have to go to the dollar store and go buy the materials themselves with their own money. The materials are all built in, and the teachers have really nice kits to help them immerse themselves in the material and help push the students to really address the Louisiana standards to the depth that we, you know, that we ask them to.
And you committee did the cost-benefit analysis.
Yes, sir. Yes, and this was, this price was actually the, we call it, it was the second lowest price, but the book that had the first price was the McGraw, the first lowest was McGraw-Hill, but they did not include the teacher kits and the student kits in their price, and that's where the money comes in, when you're gonna provide all the manipulatives and the teacher kit. So, it was tied for the lowest price with school specialty.
Mr. England, I'll make a motion if we go with the recommendation of the administration with Amplify Science, our science materials, September 8.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Warner, second by Ms. Lamont. Any other questions, further questions for Ms. Lamont? Mr. Long?
Really, just a statement, that's impressive. This company selected, the committee selected, received 92 out of a possible 100 points. Pretty good.
Yes, it's very strong, and this is the same company who produces a lot of our elementary English material that has done really well for us and really meets all the needs. So, they knew how to address the reading, the complex text, the differentiation, the scaffolding the students need. All that we see in our reading and English series, they built it into the science series. So, we've had a lot of experience with this company as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Ms. Lamont? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Ms. Lamont, thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
Okay. Consideration for revising the 2021, 2022 general fund budget to reflect state pay raises. There was no recommendation from the committee. So, Ms. Foche?
Yes, okay. Well, as we all know, and we've been following the legislative process, what the legislature did was to appropriate money within the MFP to give an $800 pay raise for every certificated staff member, and a $400 pay raise for a support staff worker. While we are very appreciative to the legislature and the governor for those amounts, we were hoping that it would be a little bit more. In fact, we're hoping it would be much more, but it's not in the cards. I know there's a lot of federal money coming into the state as well as into the local, but when you give actual pay raises that go into the scales themselves, you've got to do it with recurring revenues. You can't just take a one-time or two- or three-year allocation and build that into a permanent pay schedule. So, having said that, as we discussed it here, and you discussed it as a board, indicated that we would like to scour our budget and see if we could at least supplement it to some extent and give the largest possible raise that we possibly could within our existing revenues. So, from the state, as they appropriated those pay raises, they also, they did not appropriate any additional funds in the funding formula, state monies, the MFP, the Minimum Foundation Formula. So, we did not get an increase in the per pupil, so there's no increase to us in any state monies. So, if we were going to supplement this in any way, then we had to take a look at what we collect locally, and could we squeeze some of it and direct it to our employees? So, what we are proposing at your direction is to supplement the certificated scale at each level of the certificated pay scale, an additional 400, so that we can bring the total pay raise for certificated staff to $1,200.
That's great.
And then for the 12-month support staff, to bring their total to 800, to supplement with 400, to bring it to 800, and the nine-month to supplement to bring theirs to 600, the support staff. So, instead of doing 800 and 400, as the state has proposed, adding money that each pay scale, each step on our pay scale for certificated would be $1,200 increase for a 12-month support person, $800, and for a nine-month support, $600. As you can see in this memo, the cost of this, we have estimated to be $1,199,000, so 1.2 million, of which the state portion is about $760,000, and from our local revenues, we're looking to redirect about $437,000, so close to half a million, into increasing the state pay raise and adding a local supplement. I spoke with Ms. Rissell, who is the president of the union, to inform her what the wishes of the board were and was, and she was most appreciative on behalf of the membership to say that they appreciate anything that we can add to the state appropriation, so.
Thank you, Ms. Foche. I know in the past, I know Mr. Warner's. I know in the past, I know Mr. Long has always been an advocate of whatever funds that we had extra is to give it to the employees. And it's a pleasure to hear this tonight, that we can give this extra funds to our employees, because they deservedly deserve it. And so congratulations, and I need a motion.
And the motion would be to incorporate this into our 2021, 22 general fund, our in special revenue fund budgets.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Estebeta, second by Mr. Smith. Okay. Any further questions or comments? Mr. Long?
I just think it's great that the administration is making this recommendation, and it's, I'm glad to see that the board is able to do this at this time. I guess my question, Doris, would be, I know the southern regional average is a moving target. Are we getting any closer to the southern regional average?
Well, when we started the process a couple of years ago, we were only about 2,300, 2,500 below the southern regional average. Now it has, the gap has grown, is closer to 4,000, because surrounding states have been giving, from the state perspective, a much larger increase in the last couple of years. So, you know, we have been told by some legislative leadership that we hope, or they hope, to focus more on that in the next legislative session, to be able to appropriate additional funds.
So it's only 4,000 difference about now?
From the southern regional.
That's a lot better than it used to be years ago.
Oh, yeah. It's better than years ago, but not quite as good as about two or three years ago.
Right. Okay. Great.
Mr. Long?
Thank you, Ms. England. I think I can speak for the rest of the board that nothing brings us more joy than to be able to give our teachers, our support staff, a pay raise. And I've been on the board for 11 years now. It's always a better day when I can say I voted in favor of giving our employees a pay raise.
That's correct. Touche.
Yes.
Touche. Thank you, Mr. Long. Anyone else? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
And we thank the administration, Ms. Foche, and Mr. Fernandez putting all these numbers together. Thank you again.
And Mr. Fernandez put the numbers.
But you oversaw it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Move on. Items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda? Anybody wants anything to be going on the thing? You have, you know, up to five days before the committee meeting to put it on the agenda? Okay. All right. Superintendent's notes. Ms. Foche?
Actually, we've had a very productive summer session. Our summer skills program will end on Friday. Our high school kids are taking the summer leave 2025 exit exams. So in wrapping up those programs, we're gonna immediately go into our July, which is a intense month of professional development. The Teach St. Bernard Program for our new teachers, we'll have Data Fest for our administrators to get ready for the upcoming school year, and sessions for many of our teachers to participate in. So June was focused on the student programs, July will be focused on professional development opportunities for our teachers and administrators and staff. And then we'll open up.
Then you'll open up.
Very quickly, the first week in August.
First week in August.
First week in August.
Ooh, it's coming around quick.
Teachers report August 2nd, students August 6th.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Another year. Okay. Adjournment. Mr. Campbell, second by Ms. Estebeta. All in favor?
Aye.
This means adjournment. Thank you.